Good evening, everyone. All meeting do honor. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome. Good evening to those in the audience here and those viewing us at home. I'd like to skip down to item number five. New Youth Services Director has been hired. She's here with us this evening, so I'd like to introduce her. It's Amy Luckowitz.
Luckowitz.
Luckowitz. All right, Luckowitz.
Lucky, yes, that's good.
And she's a PC Eagle, like I am, so I know this was a great hire, so I'm very happy to see that. But welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, you want to stay up?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Excuse my back. Very good to be here. I've had an amazing first day. It's probably been the best first day on the job I've ever had. It's been unbelievably welcoming. We had, I think we figured out three meetings today already. I met with my committee members at 5:00, and I hate to run out, and thank you for moving me up on the agenda, but I'm running to the school committee meeting because the gay-straight alliance is presenting to the school committee, and I wanted to be there to support them this afternoon or this evening. And I am coming with a background working with youth, mostly five-year-olds to middle school, so this is going to be a little change with me. I'm quite looking forward to working with more teens. And the plan this week is going to be to meet with as many people as I can and more students. I've already been to the middle school and the high school today as well. It's been a great start. I'm very excited, and it's been great to even, Rita Mallon took me on a tour of the town. So I think I've really covered everything.
You're all sitting now.
And I learned that everybody knows Rita.
Oh, yeah.
I was at Ryers for lunch, talked to the staff there, and I talked to some of the kids that were coming in after high school, so that, it's been a great first day, and thanks again. Looking forward to working with you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thanks. Hate to run.
Okay. We understand. All right. Minutes, Mr. Foddy, of March 11, 2013, regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 11, 2013, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In unanimous. The March, oh, I'm sorry, the April 22, 2013, regular session minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 22, 2013, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In unanimous. The April 22, 2013, executive session minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 22, 2013, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In unanimous. And finally, the April 29, 2013, regular session minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 29, 2013, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In unanimous. Anyone here for public comment? All right, moving on to item six. We have a proclamation for Older Americans Month. Mr. Foddy?
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim May 2013 as Older Americans Month and read the attached proclamation.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proclamation. Whereas the Town of North Reading includes 3,004 citizens aged 60 and older, and whereas the Town of North Reading is committed to valuing all individuals and recognizing their ongoing life achievements, and whereas the older adults in the Town of North Reading play an important role by continuing to contribute experience, knowledge, wisdom, and accomplishments, and whereas recognizing the successes of community elders encourages their ongoing participation in further accomplishments, and whereas our older adults are active community members involved in volunteering, mentorship, art and culture, and civic engagement, and whereas recognizing the successes of community elders encourages their ongoing participation in further accomplishments, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to allow older citizens to continue to flourish by emphasizing the importance of elders and their leadership by publicly recognizing their continued achievements, presenting opportunities for old Americans to share their wisdom, experience, and skills, recognizing older adults as a valuable asset and strengthening American communities. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectment of North Reading, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim May 2013 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every citizen to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital citizens who greatly contribute to the community. Signed, Sean Delaney, Chairman, Board of Selectment.
Well, let me just say thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Freddy here. Would you like to say?
I just want to, you'll all be taking me soon enough, gentlemen, I hope. I want to just introduce Carolyn Martino is here with me today. She's an active member of our, sorry. Sorry. I just want to introduce Carolyn Martino, who's with me tonight. She's one of our active members of our senior center, but more importantly, she's a member of the, one of these volunteers that we talk about. She is a member of our tax write-off program, our senior tax aid program, but the woman has put in more hours every day than needed, probably forever she could collect taxes. So I want to thank you for acknowledging Older Americans Month, and I do want to acknowledge one more thing. Today, our van driver, Marty Dickman, retired after eight years of service. So if you're watching at home, Marty, I wasn't able to make the party, so hi, thank you, and thank you for all the hard work you've done.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good job. Item number seven, sign the bands. We have our treasurer here. Mary McKeon. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Are you?
Good, yourself?
Very good.
We have two series of bands here. We have Series A, which is for $400,000, which is our taxable bands. That is for the Hillview Country Club. And then we have our B-series bands, which is $438,529, and it's for the water department truck, Munus Software, and the water department back home. We got two really good bids. Century won both bids. For Series A, it was .70, and for Series B, it was .45. The monies will be deposited on the 30th of May, and they'll be due a year from May.
Any questions?
Any questions? Sure.
So our intent in terms, these are bands.
These are bands.
Right, so we normally try to get to bonds in September.
We could at this time. We decided because the rate was so good at this time, just to go out through a year for the bands.
Oh, I understood that.
Oh, okay.
But then what do you do between when they come due and when you go to bonds? Let's say a year hence.
In May, when they become due, we can do a short band through September or have these become permanent and do a permanent bond on these ones. We don't have to go out in September. We usually try to do, keep them all consistent and have all our bands due in September, but we don't have to keep it that way.
So right now, you're going to wait and see how interest rates develop?
Correct. Yes. So we're going to go out a full year, so it'll become due 14, May 30th, 14.
Any other questions?
Just as far as a permanent bonding timeline on these particular borrowings, are going to be for how long? Five years?
It depends on the, what articles they are. As of right now, these are just bands, so these are just one year right now. When they become permanent, they'll tell us. On certain items like the vehicles, we can only go out five years. The Munus will probably be.
Five years.
From Munus? Will be five years. Hillview, because it's improvements, it could be up to 20, 15 or 20 years. Bond council will tell us the amount of time that we'll be able to go out permanent on those.
Okay, but I think when we did the Hillview one, there must have been some sort of an anticipated timeline on that.
Which?
10 or 15?
No, we didn't do an anticipated, but we, the max was at least 20, so we can choose 10, we can choose 15. It depends on what's worthwhile, where they're not huge amounts.
Right, small dollar amount.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I, now that I think about it a little bit, I have a little bit of a problem with the short-term, the five-year-type bonds kicking it down the road by another year. I mean, typically, on a five-year, because we can only get five years, it's an item that maybe in five years, we're going to be thinking about replacing again. So if we push it out six years, you know, basically, it's another year before we're in a position to add on that additional debt.
That's as far, as bonding for the vehicles, we can only bond for five years, but usually the vehicles.
No, no, you misunderstood.
Oh, sorry.
So I guess I'm raising the issue of maybe we should just be bonding those items.
Well, we didn't, we didn't bond because we didn't want to have a rating call at this time.
Right.
Because if we go permanent and if we do a bond, we have to have a rating call. If we do a band, we don't have to have a rating call.
Okay.
So that's why we didn't.
And last year, at our rating call, it was suggested that we didn't do it right away. We don't, we would, you know, be in the position that we may be downgraded, so.
And then with the anticipation of the other borrowing that we have to do, to have two rating calls, we didn't think was at this time.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the sale of $4,000, I'm sorry, $438,529, bond anticipation notes at a rate of .45 percent dated May 30, 2013, and due May 30, 2014, payable to Century Bank.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the sale of $400,000 of bond anticipation notes at a rate of .7 percent dated May 30, 2013, and due May 30, 2014, payable to Century Bank.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. A whole bunch though. The clerk. A break. You can send the clerk once, yeah.
We can move, we'll just push. Moving on to item eight, meeting with the DBW director regarding town road project scheduling. Mr. Conavalli, thank you for coming in. I had asked Mr. Vali Konas to have you come in in light of, it was an article on Patch that came out, and before I could even open Patch, probably a week or so ago, I received some emails regarding what this board did to shut down roadwork, and I had to read the article at first. So I want to get past the article itself, because I don't know whether it was accurate as to what you responded or not, but I, it really doesn't matter.
I poorly worded my response to the request for information.
Quite honestly, at this point, I just want to get past it. Don't really care. I think, and board members can correct me if I'm wrong, all I believe the board is looking for is to make sure whatever monies are spent on roadwork, it's done in the most efficient and effective way, that being whether you get quotes and determine that it's more cost-effective, you are men, do it on overtime, or if you do determine that it's more cost-effective, do it by an outside contractor. I think that's all the board is looking for, is to have it done in that fashion, for the quotes and the bits to come in before the work is actually done. But speaking, speaking on behalf of the board, this board didn't shut down roadwork, as far as I know, so.
That is correct. That, my statement was incorrect.
Well, like I said, it don't really, doesn't matter to me whether that was a quote from you or was misquoted, but I just want the public to know that this board didn't shut down roadwork, and all we're looking for is the most effective, cost-effective way to do it, and if that's by you are men doing it on overtime, then that's terrific, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know if any other board member wants to weigh in on that issue, but that was the purpose of having you come in, publicly inform the public that we didn't shut it down.
Correct. You are right. We are proceeding with getting quotes, and then we do that analysis, and we'll make a determination based on what comes in.
Thank you for coming in, board members. Sure. Dick, are we behind on roadwork? I mean, I don't, you know, the question came in that says we're behind on, we're behind on roadwork. I'm just curious, are we?
Wasn't really behind on roadwork. We did start the prep work in April.
Right.
But due to a lot of winter damage, so we're doing winter damage and sweeping primarily, and depending on what we get for quotes, we'll start the road prep sometime later this month or later next month, hopefully to start paving late June or July. So a little bit later than usual, but nothing significant.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Greg, 7:30 to do the public hearing on the carnival?
Correct. We have an advertised hearing at 7:30, and we have a second advertised hearing at 8:00.
Fair enough. Moving on to, I'll move on to item 12, discuss liaison assignments. Board members, my approach, my thought, my approach this year would be unless there was an agreement between board members to switch assignments, that I would keep assignments as they were for the past year. It seemed to work pretty well, but I welcome your input and your comments. If you like a different approach, I'll certainly consider it, but that was my initial thought process on liaison assignments for the upcoming fiscal year.
I don't have a problem with your approach. I, my, the one issue I have is CPC I'm having a problem with, because as you know, I work my full-time job. I work late Tuesday nights, and CPC meets on Tuesday nights, and it's unfair to them that I'm not be able to, I can't make the majority of the meetings, so if someone, I did mention it to Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Prisco.
I had mentioned to Joe, actually, even before the issue of the CPC came up, but everything that's going on at RMLD, they're going through a transition over there. I think Mr. Foddy would be much more suitable to be the liaison, since he has more experience in utilities than I ever have, and there has been some struggles, and there's definitely a lot more coming, and I would make the suggestion that maybe him and I trade the RMLD, and I'll take back the CPC, because I am available on those evenings, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussions on that topic? Mr. O'Leary?
I just want to mention that, while we're on the topic, that RMLD will be making their decision on Wednesday evening if anybody wants to attend at 7:30, I believe at 7:30 or 7 o'clock on their selection. They've made a decision, and they're going to announce it on Wednesday.
So on affirmative general matter here, they've made a selection. They expedite things from about a month ago?
Mm-hmm.
That's good. Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Messeri.
Well, a little deviation from last year, obviously. Again, I would like to pick up the Hillview again, as I had had it for a number of years, and would like to go back to being liaison with the Hillview Commission. I think the last year was an interesting year with the change of contracts. I think the contract that was negotiated and the fact that the pub isn't open, I think the consternation was not adequately reflected, and I hoped that maybe, you know, would have, would transpire that the pub would be open to the public on a regular basis. That didn't happen. So again, a little deviation from what your tack was last year, Mr. Chairman. You are the chair.
I voted for you.
I trust that you're doing what's in the best interest of the community and the board as a whole. So other than looking for the Hillview Commission assignment back, I would hope that you would consider that again, but ultimately, the decision is yours.
I'm happy with what I have. If somebody wants any one of those, I'd be happy to swap with somebody just to mix it up.
Thank you very much. Thank you, board members. I'll be taking a look at that and have something probably by the meeting after.
Did I see the spreadsheet that you took the other night?
Yes.
Or is this a copy of a copy? It looks like a copy.
That's a copy of a copy. Yeah, no, I have that.
You have that, okay.
I'll be taking my proposals probably in a minute. Thank you for your reflection.
Appreciate that.
Sign notes, and I'll do it last. Vali Konas, would you like to start? We have about three, four minutes. Studying Town Administration's report.
Sure, it's brief this evening, but as you know, within the, last week, we received an update on the Senate Ways and Means Budget. It had no change in Chapter 70, but the unrestricted local government aid was reduced by $35,500. In discussions that we've had internally with the Finance Division, it would be our recommendation that the budget that's contained in the town meeting warrant that you voted, based upon the House number, is the number that we go to town meeting with. There's always some risk that, in fact, the lower number gets adopted, however, the Mass Municipal Association did speak to the issue, and they spoke to the issue in terms of the fact as though they felt the higher number was appropriate. So we do not recommend any change, but we do want to acknowledge that the Senate number that we released is a bit lower than what we anticipated for state aid.
Thank you.
Then the, the only other item that I had was just an acknowledgement of the fact that we are beginning our process for the, there's a regional emergency planning meeting tomorrow, where staff will be attending, a number of people will be going to it, and then also, there is the Mass Development, Economic Development Conference, which takes place in Salem on Wednesday. So I'll be going to that with our CPC planner, who will be here in about a half an hour. Thank you.
Can you just provide some detail of the Regional Emergency Planning Committee? What does that function as?
It is the emergency management directors of all the communities. We typically get together, and we would have a meeting to discuss regional issues affecting emergency management. Staff comes to those meetings, and others, we try to invite in all of our department heads. We get together once a year to really discuss how we might be able to best coordinate amongst other cities and towns when it comes to emergencies.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Well, moving right along.
It's almost 7:30.
All right. Do we have a public hearing notice?
Yes.
Mr. Foddy on the item nine, Fourth of July Committee Carnival permit?
Thank you. Notice of public hearing. In accordance with general bylaws of the Town of North Reading, Chapter 37.2, the Board of Selectment will hold public hearing in Room 14 Town Hall, 235 North Street, on Monday, May 20, 2013, at 7:30 PM, on the application of North Reading Fourth of July Committee to sponsor a festival and carnival at the Apertrever Park on July 3, 4, 5, and 6, 2013.
Public hearing is open, and Mr. Vino, I see you rise. Come on up, sir. Nice to see you.
Good evening, Joe. Thank you. Joe Vino, Levin Rogers. I'm here on behalf of the Fourth of July Committee, and most of the committee is here also. Well, the carnival will be on, the setup will be on July 2. The inspection and opening would be on July 3. It would open at 5:00 on July 3, 5 to 10. July 4, July 4, 5, and 6 would be noon to 10, all three days. We had a meeting with all the police, fire, recreation, DBW, just about everybody who's a Theo, just about everybody who's involved this year. We had that last Thursday? Thursday. We, we pretty much got everything ironed out. I know my committee has an issue with one item, I'm going to let them speak on it, but everything else, we, we pretty much got it ironed out, as far as, I mean, we've covered everything. We're going to have a point person that's there, who's going to be in touch with the police and fire point person. They're going to have a meeting every day before the event starts. There'll be all four days, and they'll have a meeting up front, so, okay, he's here, he's here, I'm this person here. Pretty much everything was covered, everything I can think of, every, every concern was brought up. The, the big concern that the committee has, and I'll let them speak on it, I think, I think John Magazou will come up, I'm not sure who it's going to, is the buses. They really do want the buses. The committee was opposed to the buses, except for the police chief. He was in favor of the buses, so I guess he lost, because, and the issue is not being able to evacuate everybody at one time. This was the issue. But a lot of, a lot of that issue has been taken care of, though, because there's been a decision made that the police and/or fire will make the call at 4:00, whether it goes or doesn't go, does not go. Now, because if they see a storm that's 70 miles out, because we now have that detector, I'll call it, either police or fire, or both, can say, no fireworks, we have a storm coming our way, and that's the way it is.
They can do that separately, Mr. Vino?
Pardon me?
They can do that separately, or they have to make that decision together?
Either or.
Really?
If police says go and fire says no, it's off, or vice versa.
Okay.
This is matter of fact, Mr. Foddy, that's a good question, that was brought up at the meeting, who would it be? They both agreed that it would be either or or one of us, but if one of them say no, it's off.
Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I, Greg, can you think of anything? I mean, we kind of covered everything.
I think we, I think the major concern was the presence of public safety, and we're happy to hear that the committee.
And that's, we've been given the, the numbers that the police and fire want, and we don't have a problem with that, you know, that's why I basically come in here Friday and said, don't kill the messenger, what do you want? You know what I mean? Really, you know, because we had to know just what the town wanted us to do, and there is an issue on the buses, though, and I'm not a voting member, so I won't speak on that. So if, that's.
Yeah, I guess I don't, I don't understand the, maybe.
What is the issue?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can I, can I speak to the issue of why?
Yeah, go ahead.
The recommendation? Thank you. When we met, it was, it's our understanding that there were a total of two buses that are present to transport people to and from the site, and when you had a situation such as the one that occurred last year, those buses proved to be inadequate in terms of evacuating people, and it was the opinion of the administration and public safety that we had a hazardous situation, but for the good graces of God, so that someone didn't get hurt or killed. The, the view was that the public depended upon those buses to evacuate them, and they weren't adequate in terms of the numbers. We don't have an emergency shelter. Remember the city of Boston, a year ago, when the thunderstorms approached Boston, they were able to evacuate inside of one of the sterile drive tunnels. We don't have that opportunity, and so the feeling is that the buses provide some level of security, that the town will be making a call and evacuating people on the buses, and unfortunately, that didn't take place, just because there was not a sufficient number of buses to be able to transport people from the site.
But if the call's being made at 4:00, I would imagine 4:00 is going to give sufficient time. One, you're not going to have a crowd there, and two, it's going to give sufficient time to get whoever's there.
The fear is at that time of year, the weather is unpredictable, there can always be a storm that blows up in proximity to here, and, and again, the concern, the concern was strictly from the point of view that we didn't feel that two buses were adequate to ensure safe evacuation, if that evacuation is necessary. We'll certainly respect the position of the board in terms of its decision.
I guess, I don't get it.
Neither.
There's not enough parking, and that's why they were busing people from other parking lots, right? So if you don't have the buses, people are going to.
Walk.
Well, then.
That's what we're, that's what we're encouraging people to do, is to walk to the site.
From our evacuation standpoint, it doesn't change anything if you're.
It doesn't. Right. Right, I think, I, you asked my exact same question. The point is, they're going to take the buses, and they're going to come staggered times because they're going back and forth.
If they have to be evacuated, if there's no buses, they still have to walk. So, a portion of the people will get on buses, and a portion will still walk.
Of course. Just remember, the, the feeling is, is that the providing of buses, I think it's, I think it's unusual, I don't think it's standard in other communities. I think that there'll be an extra large crowd, we've been informed that the fact that Town of Wilmington is not having their fireworks this year because of construction at their high school facility. It's, it's our opinion that the number of buses that are necessary to transport would be, would be a problem. And again, we're not concerned about, we're not concerned about everything being status quo, we're concerned about is a weather emergency similar to what we had last year.
So, is the administration saying there should be X number of buses over and above the two?
No, we don't feel that, we don't feel that there should be any buses at all. That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Vino?
And, and on the flip side of that, as I said, the police chief did not agree with the rest of the committee, and he's probably right. He's, he's expecting a horror show, people just packing everywhere.
Yeah, that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah. If there were no buses.
If there were no buses, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And I, I, I agree with the police chief. Just being from that field, like, you know, at least if they have a place, they know they can go and get them up. I mean, you know.
I mean, logically, it seems to me, and I, I happen to be there, I left when I knew the storm was gonna hit, probably a lot sooner than a lot of other people, and I just get out of there, right? And, and it would seem to me that, yeah, there's a situation out there that could come up without any notice, right? But that's pretty slim today, and I think you create more of a problem by not having parking and buses, you know, close by, there'll be parking everywhere.
People's yards.
Yeah.
I, I agree.
That's a nightmare.
We agree, we agree. The committee, and I agree.
Mr. Prisco?
Joey, a question. Today, the school buses for our schools are actually parked down at IRP. Are they gonna be moved out for this event?
I would assume so, because we need the room, yeah.
Mr. Tilton?
At the end of the school year, they're gone.
Okay, they're gonna be gone for the school?
They're gone.
Okay, good. So, we'll have all that area to park in, plus they'll have the high school to park in as well?
If we get permission from them. I got it last year, I assumed they'll let us do it.
Well, that's what I'm asking, obviously you haven't received.
That'll be dependent upon what the construction is.
Well, yeah, right, exactly. So, I actually thought of something else, maybe asking the church-
Maybe block it off.
St. Teresa's, you know, if we need, if we need more room, you know.
Stop and shop.
Pardon?
Stop and shop.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, if we don't have the school, yeah, we would find a, try to find a couple other satellite spots, like I say, St. Teresa's or Stop and Shop.
Unless job lot comes in before that.
I'm gonna open a store on it. You'll see it on in tomorrow. So, so, so that, I, I-
He knows the whole story.
Committee wants to, come up here, come on. I, I'm speaking for the committee.
You're leaving you all by yourself, John.
Well, no, that's okay, I'm the big boy. And I don't mean just your size. We can, you know, would really like to see the buses, so, but-
Who makes the decision?
Pardon?
Who makes the decision to have buses?
Well, the committee made the decision, the, the town committee-
Fourth of July.
Mr. BelliConus?
No, no.
I think you're saying administration.
No, no, the administration made the decision.
We make a recommendation.
Okay.
We make a recommendation, we feel that there's a fair airing and an opportunity to talk about it, as we're doing right now. Certainly, if the board, in granting the permit, decides that buses are appropriate, then you decide that.
Mr. Prisco?
This, this isn't an issue about money, is it? Regarding the buses?
No.
No.
Everything's regarding money.
Well, I mean, if we had to hire 15 buses, it becomes an issue.
I think, I think it's just a matter of, of making sure that people can have adequate transportation, so that they're not parking everywhere. We're concerned if people walk, that we create more of a public safety concern, because then what happens is, someone's walking, they get hit, it's, it's the same liability, whether or not you have them on a bus, or you have them on their feet. It's the same thing. So, for, you know, if, if liability is a concern, then it's equal. So, it's, you know, it's just a matter of making sure that the plan we have in place adequately covers us, so that that liability is reduced.
Mr. Fordy?
No, no.
Mr. Prisco?
No, I, I think it makes sense that you talk to the Stop and Shop folks, and maybe you talk to, I'd say Teresa's, and then you get the buses, and you transport them off from that area. I wouldn't rely on the school being available, just at this point, because there's gonna be so much going on after the school gets out. And I, and I think that's the safest way, and you just make sure you have the right signage out, so people know that show's available, where they're going, how they get back.
These gentlemen will make that decision for us, whether we can have a bus.
I mean, is that, is that an unreasonable thing for us to be considering?
No.
So, Michael, they want the buses.
No, we want the buses.
Administration has told them no buses.
The administration has-
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
No, 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 no. Fourth of July wants the buses. We want the two buses.
I heard committee.
This member of Board of Select wants the buses.
Okay.
The issue is that you gentlemen want the buses.
And we can follow up at Stop and Shop, to see if that, if they're willing to let us use their space as a shuttle location, because we do, we were concerned that the school was gonna be a problem, so.
How many buses do you need?
I'll take that on, I'll look into that in terms of what's gonna be available at the high school, but I would anticipate that at least half of, one of those parking lots will be unusable for the summer.
Yeah, probably.
That's what I anticipate. Mr. Tilton?
I believe it's gonna be the teachers' side, and one school's out, that's gonna be unavailable.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. I'm a little close to it, so I, I can find, I should know, but I don't, but I can find out.
I think this could take a few minutes to work.
Mr. Magazou?
We hear your concerns regarding the buses. Yeah, okay, great.
I, I'd like the past chairman of the Fourth of July Committee that ran the safety and ran the buses for a couple of decades, Mr. Warren Pierce.
Nice introduction, is that all you wanted to get up and do? I could've done that.
I can do, do something else afterward, but let him talk, honor first.
Just, just a couple of things. Besides having run this event for quite a few years, and, and having to deal with this every, looking, looking at what could possibly happen, and making calls on it, we actually, I think, only had one year where we had any, any, what might be considered significant But also, since I'm in the, in the business now of doing fireworks shows, I will say that on, on the Fourth of July last year, we had eight shows, and North Reading is the only show that did not go. So, there was a lot of uncertainty as to where that weather was coming, and how it was gonna, how it was gonna develop. I think that the answer to the que, the question this year, and, and in the decisions that I make in my business doing shows now, we've actually become a lot more conservative about the times, the timeframes in which we make the decision. So, I think that making an earlier decision about whether to continue the event is probably apropos, and we've been, we're planning on doing that in all the shows we do this year. So, and the weather seems to be a little less certain than it's been in the past. So, that, that's a very rational and practical thing to do. Having said that, the buses are a good idea, they just are. They, the schools are a good idea if we can get as much of the school as possible, because it's walking distance. If you make an earlier decision, not everybody has to use the bus to get back to their, their parked cars. The vast majority could actually walk. The buses are a convenience for those people. And for the people that can't walk that distance, the buses that are available will be adequate. So, I believe that that's not, it's not as big of an issue as it's probably being made out to be, especially if we keep the parking close. The schools have been excellent in the past, allowing us to use those parking lots. I think there's actually more parking at the middle school than there used to be. So, there's probably, you know, and, and we did, and that was one of the stopping points, and having some parking at the high school, and perhaps a satellite area of some kind, where an additional bus might be added on to do that, if it's, if it's possible. North Reading Transportation's been excellent about supplying that, taking care of it, they've been very, very good over the years. And all the years that we did this, it's been done very safely and, and very well thought out. I think that they've done that again. And I would, unless there are any questions on it, I would encourage you to, to keep the buses. I think they provide, for the people that can't, traverse that level of safety.
I agree, thank you. Mr. Prisco?
Yeah.
Before you walk away, because I know a lot of people in Wilmington are listening, are there really no fireworks in Wilmington, or?
That's incorrect, there are two shows, two fireworks shows in Wilmington.
Are there will, okay.
Yes, we're shooting them both.
Did we see this special permit to move the location?
Do they? I'm assuming that they did, because they contracted.
They did not receive it.
Oh. Though, they don't have to move the location of the show, they're gonna keep it in the place where they had it.
They can't, that's where the high school's being built.
No, they, they have it in the field at the back.
But that's all now construction's on.
They're not gonna have people in that area.
No, I know that. But they did suppose that. So, they're still gonna have the fireworks.
Yes, they're not gonna have the carnival.
Okay, Wilmington, I'm just gonna bring it back to North Reading.
They are having it.
Wilmington can decide whether or not having it, with having it, I don't really care. I'm concerned about whether or not we're gonna have buses.
I think, I think that-
Nice debate, I like it, but that's Wilmington.
I think that was brought up-
Go down a mile and have it over there, all right?
I think that was brought up, Sean, to, to, to gauge the, the level of it.
Yeah, that's all, that's real.
So, I think that probably that, the carnival is probably gonna be more of the draw, because that's what they're not having.
Okay. Mr. Pierce, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to just get, poll the board as to your position on buses, Fourth of July fireworks and carnival. Mr. O'Leary?
I say, stay the course. I like the, I like the idea of the, of the buses. I recognize that the buses are not gonna be numerous enough to answer the call on an evacuation situation, but they were never intended to be for that purpose, anyway. And I don't think we should necessarily have to plan for that either, you know. So, and I also like the suggestion, Mr. Pierce, that if they can use the school, that should be the first location, because of its proximity to the Hipster River Park. So, I'm in favor of buses.
I don't, I don't disagree with you regarding the schools, I just don't know what's gonna be available.
And again, if you're gonna lose the front parking lot, I would still say the back parking lot and the middle school are still a significant amount of parking area, and convenience wise, if people do choose to leave early on, need to be evacuated, it's a lot easier than walking down to St. Teresa's Church or Stop and Shop, or the old Stop and Shop location.
Mr. Fordy?
I absolutely think you should keep the buses. I think it's, if you don't have the buses, you still have to have the concern about walking to wherever you're going to anyway, so, I'd say you keep them.
Mr. Prisco?
I think Rita Mullins' house should be the emergency shelter.
Enough, there's enough out of you, Tony. There's enough uproar, so why, why the buses issue, Mr. Prisco?
Buses, sorry, buses.
The buses, yes. The chair also agrees the buses are an integral part of this, to get people to and from. So, Mr. Vino?
Chairman, if I may, you, everyone again, I'm, I'm assuming, you gentlemen, it's tough to hear back here, but anyways, I'm assuming, I think what I heard is you go, we can go forward with the buses. The question is, can we go forward with the two we always had?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted, I just wanted to get that.
As far as I'm concerned, as far as-
Old Africa 15.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, that's committee decision.
Yep, okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Best of luck. Are there any other fundraising events before the Fourth of July that you want to make people aware of? No? Okay, I was gonna give you an opportunity to come up.
Only five weeks away, just one down.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, just before you conclude discussion on the carnival, could I ask a question as to whether there's going to be carnival workers doing, housed on-site, and where they will be, and what the configuration of the housing will be?
So, look, if I may, that, I have, I have that written down, as you know, Mr. BelliConus, that came up at the meeting Friday. I don't know the answer, but I have written down in here, and my committee doesn't even have a copy this year, it's the first time I saw them since Friday. If there is, the fire department has to inspect it. We were told that by the fire chief. If they have carnival housing, I guess sometimes they have like trailers, and they have like, broken up into four or five units where they sleep in the trailers, the fire department has to, has to inspect those. So, are they gonna have it? I don't, you know, Martin?
I believe they will. Chief will say.
But if they were, it would be behind the, the facility that you run.
Yeah, but I'm almost, but he wasn't gonna allow that.
I just wanted to make sure that it was brought up.
And then, as far as the new fingerprinting regulation, how are they going to?
That's not going to be in place.
It's not in place?
Well, no, it will be.
It may have been voted at town meeting, but the question is whether it passes muster through the attorney general.
That's right, that's right. But if it does-
Then we'll be prepared to go ahead and, and require those people who are subject to civil fingerprinting.
Okay.
But that may affect the bid price, perhaps, so, perhaps we would have to waive it for this year. Just, board members, just, we, we may have to waive the fee requirement for this year, because it wouldn't have been factored into the bid process.
Well, the problem with that is, part of that fee goes to the, it's a pass to the state.
That's if we require, yeah.
Oh, yeah, right, only if required.
And if we waive it.
I don't, I don't think, check with, the chief is more intimately familiar with this than I am, I think the state is gonna want that piece, because they have to process.
If that's the case, then we waive our portion of it.
Right.
Work with them.
Give them motion.
Just the only other thing, just the rationale as far as going the additional day, do you think there's really gonna warrant enough business?
Which, which, the third you talking about?
The, the third or the fifth, take your pick.
Going on both of them. You, originally, it was one-day carnival, I believe, right?
Sixth.
Sixth.
The carnivals won't do one day. If it was, we'd have it, okay? They require a minimum of three days. The inspections are done and completed by the third, okay? So, they're ready to open. If you have all your inspections by the afternoon, and we're gonna be sitting there around anyways, might as well give them a test run the night before, and get, get people through. So, I just, and, and the carnival has not committed to that day yet. It's something that we wanted to put on the table, in case we opened it, but right now, we're scheduling them, our contracts for the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth, but with a, you know, coin toss, and, and we're still working out the details. We're gonna be there anyways, let's give it a test run.
What was the?
Everything's gonna be regarding, you know, fire inspections, electrical inspections, safety inspections, you know, fire, you know, everybody's gonna be inspected to the nth degree.
But there's no, obviously, if you look at the findings, there's no additional detriment for, to the committee or expense in relation to keeping it open the sixth? You can only gain more?
Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth are your full days.
Right.
We're, we're just, if, if we did, did anything additional, it would be moving to the third. We were always planning Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth, because that's a Saturday, the Sixth is a Saturday.
Right.
You know? All right?
Good.
All right. You have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a carnival permit to the Fourth of July Committee for July 3rd, Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth, 2013, to be held at Hipster River Park, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Change of hands. Best of luck, good luck. May Mother Nation be with you this year.
Thanks.
There you go.
The odds are with you.
I have three days, it's a little different, probably. You can post it in one day.
Yeah.
I can't think of a town that's going to stop it, and they didn't go off. I didn't know that.
Well, when it came through, it was still, it was still, okay?
Yeah, when it came through, it was, we knew long before it was coming.
Yeah, I would have, and it's fine with us.
And, thank, thank him.
Take a five minute, six minute recess, we can't start public hearing till eight o'clock.
Sure.
Mr. O'Leary.
Is there a time constraint on the moratorium? It's eighteen months. We're constricting it, we're deciding, we're choosing eighteen months. Some people have chosen two years, some people a year, we've chosen eighteen months. And it gives us, there's a reason for, there's a timeframe that happens, a year, there'll be a lot of people that have gone through the process because there are some one-year moratoriums out there. We'll begin to see the results of those. That'll be very helpful to us.
I just think we do need some clarification from Town Council that the imposition of this moratorium does, in fact, protect us for that time period.
That's how they have advised us.
That's how they've advised us, yes.
I don't doubt that, but I think I'd like to see it in writing, so if we could get an opinion from Council.
We have it in writing.
I know the rest of the members of the board, but I'd like to...
I think they already have it.
We have it, great. If we don't have it, let's get it.
I can, I can look at how the, you know, how it's been worded, and if it's not, right, if the advice they've given us isn't that explicit, then I can request that they make it explicit.
I think the way it has worked is the Attorney General's office has okay moratoriums, and then if you're an applicant looking to establish one of these businesses, my understanding is a two-step process before Department of Public Health, I believe. So I think what would happen is Department of Public Health would first look to the community, okay, what's your status? Are you accepting it, or do you have a moratorium? And the way you do, they wouldn't approve the first step of the applicant. That's the way I think it's going to play out. But I'm not Town Council on this, so I don't know what Town Council is.
Yeah, I believe that what they would, I believe that what they would do is say, you know, if you want to place your application, once the, once the law they have is voted on, as long as you comply with that, then you could continue with that community.
I think this is the right approach, I think this is the way to go about it, and I would like to see it, like, considering Mr. O'Leary has a spot in someone like a Delta Detainment, put it in. The location would not be desirable for an applicant to set up operation, so.
You said eighteen months?
Until October, end of October 2014, so that would allow us to bring it forward for October 2014 town meeting.
Okay. Is this the right time?
Yeah. It's the zoning change, so it's October meeting, so it's the correct time for it.
Not related to this, but I know they have a meeting tomorrow night, just as an aside, if I might.
Sure.
I was gonna bring it up about all the new business, anyway. Teresa's coming before you for signage and lighting and that sort of a thing.
Yep.
I know you're all aware of it, I've gotten some phone calls, you probably have two, in relation to, it is still a neighborhood, it is a residential neighborhood that had certainly a different use there for all these years, and I assure, confident, and I tried to assure these people that you would be cognizant of the residential nature of the neighborhood and try and maintain it as much as you can, so.
Their meeting tonight is strictly for the sign, by, by...
Yes. Just the signage, but the signage and how much signage and lighting on the signage is this evening?
It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow?
Yes. I had actually hoped to bring them in for, you know, a site plan, and I hope they might come in, even as a voluntary, prior to beginning, I spoke to the building inspector at some length about this. Not, in his opinion, they are, they continue an existing non-conforming use, pre-existing non-conforming use, they're continuing it. And I was more interested in getting some input from the neighborhood as far as what, what was gonna happen, so that they would all, so they'd be, so they'd be aware, comfortable, not, not that I would consider overturning the decision the building inspector made, he used his best judgment on it, and, but I just thought it would be nice if the, if the people that live around there had a chance to be educated about what was gonna happen, a chance to see what's actually happening there, be involved in the process, so it might have made it smoother.
It's sort of expressed with already the temporary signage and the lighting on it, so. But I, I think we have to be sensitive and cognizant of, whether they want to look upon it as a continuing use of a pre-existing whatever, not so. Not so, because it wasn't a twenty-four-seven, or wasn't a seven-day-a-week operation with Sam Ellis that they're looking for, or granted.
Well, I think there are some other issues, I think there are some other issues that are coming along there too, so there may be, there may be a little more to it than that.
But thank you for indulging me.
Yeah. It's a real concern, it's been a concern of mine since it began, Steve.
Sure. I'd assure the people that...
Lighting that's gonna be coming out of those towers.
Believe me.
I don't know if that's real, if they're really gonna do it.
Yeah.
If they're really lighting it, that was an architect's right.
Right.
Well, I heard that. I don't know why they were presented if you didn't like the architect...
The Twin Towers.
Right.
We'll have a chance to discuss that tomorrow night, we'll, unless one of you are gonna be there, we'll keep you apprised of what's gonna happen, what happens, yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 33, amend code zoning bylaws, Article 24, temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers. This midnight, if you wanna come up, members of your community, if they wish to come up with her, are you gonna leave her by herself, at least you're in the room this time?
Come on front.
Oh, man, you're on fire, too. They took a shot at me outside, so, please.
See you doing it, T G.
Thank you for...
Warren, can you move the mic?
Put it right on the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations first.
Thank you, thank you for being so accommodating, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. So, you'd like to address this article in the position of the community planning commission?
Sure. So, we have decided that the smartest approach here would be to request a temporary moratorium on, on medical marijuana dispensaries, because at the time that we were first discussing this, there had not been official regulations issued by the Department of Public Health. The regulations have been issued, but now we would really like to take the time to, you know, embark on a thoughtful process, consider exactly how we want to treat applications for dispensaries in the town of North Reading. We now have more information than we did when this issue first came up, because we know that there have been several towns who have applied for, you know, have submitted zoning bylaws banning dispensaries, and the attorney general has not allowed that to stand. So, we have more information now than we did before, but there's still a lot more that we would like to look at, we would like to take our time and, and think carefully about how we want to regulate these now that we know more about what our options are.
Also, you know, citing of them is another issue, and with the, with the fact that the state has issued its regulations, some of the towns also will probably, some of them may begin to put some regulations together and forward them to the attorney general, where there'll be some decisions made, and that knowledge will help us do a much better job, how those are handled by the state will get, will help us craft a law that we know will withstand any challenge or stand the test of time, if you will. So, it really makes sense for us to take a little time, and the way the law was written, it doesn't, I think it's important to note that the way the law was written, it doesn't harm anybody by us doing this, okay? It doesn't harm anybody, and it does give us the town a chance to, to craft a law that is good for this town and to cite these, these, these centers in a, in a reasonable way, so.
Mr. O'Leary.
What happens if someone petitions the town to bring one in now?
I've spoken with the building inspector about that, he thinks that it's possible that there are uses that we already have in place that could be interpreted as including a medical marijuana dispensary. That's really a problem that most cities and towns have right now, so we, we think that by taking the moratorium approach, that's really the fastest way for us to kind of put on the brakes and say that we would like to consider this, because, I mean, really, this is the earliest we can, we can act, you know, because, because of the timing of town meeting.
But by putting, by putting a moratorium on, does that, that's the word I'm looking for, does that necessarily create the use specific to medical marijuana sightings and put it, truly put it on hold? Or...
The moratorium that we have is written by town council and used in some other places, and their opinion is, from what I understand, is that, is that it does, it gives us the protection that we want. But I, but I referred to the fact that some of these other towns will be putting some things forward, and the agricultural use thing is what I was kind of inferring, that we're gonna see some of that, and the way those get handled is gonna give us the information back to make, to make decisions about how we craft our law.
Just from a personal standpoint, and I read somewhere, I guess because of the few topics discussed here, is that, you know, I would like to see us avoid a storefront situation, where if people are going to be dispensing it, whether it be through mail out or through some other, some other means, where you're not going to have necessarily a storefront situation, and maybe we could cite it in the commercial, in the industrial area, out back somewhere, so that you're not having the regular commerce that you would have through a regular storefront, say Route 28 or 62, but, you know.
I understand that, I understand that feeling, I, I think that what we're going to do is try to, similar to what we did with the adult use law, we're going to try to cite it in such a way so that if it does develop, that this is a, there's only, I think, thirty-two locations or something, that's gonna be, thirty-five, I'm saying.
It's a few, it's only a few.
In the, in the state, and basically the, for the, one per county, so I think that it might not be as prevalent of a, of a business as you might think.
Well, if there's only that few, it could be.
Perhaps, but, but there are locations where public transportation makes accessibility far more attractive than in North Reading, who has no public transportation, for example. So, I think that we are going to, we're going to look at, at the same way we did with, with any of the other laws that we've done, we're gonna look at what serves the town the best, and we're gonna take advantage of the knowledge we can gain from other people's applications and approvals, or disapprovals, as we go through the process of writing this law.
What matters? Will you be giving a presentation at town meeting on this?
I think that probably no more than to ask for the moratorium, because, again, we haven't crafted anything yet, we're still gathering, information gathering, and that's why the moratorium is actually a popular, it's, it's a popular move by a lot of communities, partly because of the unsureness, even though they've issued all these, the rules and regulations that they have, there's always interpretation, and so there's gonna be interpretation of those by other people and, and by us, as we read through them and decide how they affect us. And so, again, at town meeting, we're not gonna get into the nuts and bolts of a law, we're gonna get into the reason for the moratorium, I think that's the best move right now until we research it.
Right. So, that's why I'm asking, are you doing that in the form of a follow point slide, or you're just gonna stand up?
Probably no, probably keep it simple, because it is simple, it's strictly a moratorium to gather information.
Okay, thank you. Mr. O'Leary.
Is there a time constraint on the moratorium?
It's eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
We are constricting it, we're deciding, we're choosing eighteen months, some people have chosen two years, some people a year, we've chosen eighteen months, and it gives us, there's a, there's a reason for, there's a timeframe that happens, a year, there'll be a lot of people that have gone through the process, because there are some one-year moratoriums out there, we'll begin to see the results of those, that'll be very helpful to us.
I just think we do need some clarification from Town Council that the imposition of this moratorium does, in fact, protect us for that time period.
That's how they have advised us.
That's how they've advised us, yes.
I don't doubt that, but I think I'd like to see it in writing, so if we could get an opinion from council.
We have it in writing.
I don't know the rest of the members of the board, but I'd like to...
I think they already have it.
We have it, great, if we don't have it, let's get it.
I can, I can look at how the, you know, how it's been worded, and if it's not, right, if, if the advice they've given us isn't that explicit, then I can request that they make it explicit.
I think the way it has worked is the attorney general's office has okay moratoriums, and then if you're an applicant looking to establish one of these businesses, my understanding is a two-step process before Department of Public Health, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
So I think what would happen is Department of Public Health would first look to the community, okay, what's your status, are you accepting it, or do you have a moratorium? And the way you do, they wouldn't approve the first step of the applicant, that's the way I think it's going to play out. But I'm not Town Council on this, so I don't know what Town Council is.
Yeah, I believe that what they would, I believe that what they would do is say, you know, if you want to place your application, once the, once the law they have is voted on, as long as you comply with that, then you could continue with that community.
I think this is the right approach, I think this is the way to go about it, and I would like to see it, like, considering Mr. O'Leary has a spot in someone like a Delta Detainment, put it in. The location would not be desirable for an applicant to set up operation, so. Mr. Prisco.
You said eighteen months?
Till October, end of October 2014, so that would allow us to bring it forward for October 2014 town meeting.
Okay. Is this the right time?
Yeah. It's the zoning change, so it's October meeting, so it's the correct time for it.
Anything else? Board members?
Not related to this, but I know they have a meeting tomorrow night, just as an aside, if I might.
Sure.
I was gonna bring it up about all the new business, anyway. Teresa's coming before you for signage and lighting and that sort of a thing.
Yep.
I know you're all aware of it, I've gotten some phone calls, you probably have two, in relation to, it is still a neighborhood, it is a residential neighborhood that had a, certainly a different use there for all these years, and I assure, confident, and I tried to assure these people that you would be cognizant of the residential nature of the neighborhood and try and maintain it as much as you can, so.
Their, their meeting tonight is strictly for the sign, by, by...
Yes.
Just the signage, but the signage and how much signage and lighting on the signage is this evening?
It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow?
Yes.
I had actually hoped to bring them in for, you know, a site plan, and I hope they might come in, it had been as involuntary, prior to beginning, I spoke to the building inspector at some length about this, not, in his opinion, they are, they continue an existing non-conforming use, pre-existing non-conforming use, they're continuing it. And I was more interested in, in getting some input from the neighborhood as far as what, what was gonna happen, so that they would all, so they'd be, so they'd be aware, comfortable, not, not that I would consider overturning the decision the building inspector made, he used his best judgment on it, and, but I just thought it would be nice if the departments, if the people that live around there had a chance to be educated about what was gonna happen, a chance to see what's actually happening there, be involved in the process, so it might have made it smoother.
It's sort of expressed with already the temporary signage and the lighting on it, so.
Yeah.
But I, I think we have to be sensitive and cognizant of, whether they want to look upon it as a continuing use of a pre-existing whatever, not so.
Not so.
Not so, because it wasn't a twenty-four-seven, or wasn't a seven-day-a-week operation with Sam Ellis that they're looking for, or granted.
Well, I think there are some other issues, I think there are some other issues that are coming along there too, so there may be, there may be a little more to it than that.
But thank you for indulging me.
Yeah. It's a real concern, it's been a concern of mine since it began, Steve.
Sure. I'd assure the people that...
Lighting that's gonna be coming out of those towers.
Believe me.
I don't know if that's real, if they're really gonna do it, if they're really lighting it, that was an architect's right.
Well, I heard that. I don't know why they were presented if you didn't like the architect...
The Twin Towers.
Right.
We'll have a chance to discuss that tomorrow night, we'll, unless one of you are gonna be there, we'll keep you apprised of what's gonna happen, what happens, yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 33, amend code zoning bylaws, Article 24, temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussions, board members? Here we go, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Someone wish to take Article 33 at town meeting?
I think the CPC does that.
Just do it.
CPC will do it, CPC will do it, just give a recommendation.
Court member might read the motion.
Well, that's what I mean, that's what I mean, they'll read it, they'll read it, okay. All right?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I missed that.
CPC is assigned to Article 33.
That's it, they're the sponsor. Okay, so we'll just give a recommendation.
I'm going to skip to Article 40, citizens petition install water main and fire hydrant on Summit Road, I believe the citizen, Christine McGinnis, is here, if you don't mind, just identify yourself.
I wasn't expecting this.
It's all right.
You will be here all night?
Just state your name and your address.
Sure, it's Christine McGinnis, 5 Summit Road.
Do you explain to the board what you're looking for?
Yeah, we've been there now for about ten years, and our biggest concern is, we live on a dead-end street, and there's no fire hydrant anywhere around us, and my biggest concern is the, the safety, God forbid anything happens. My new home was just built across the street as well, and nothing, I thought maybe the town would probably install some kind of fire hydrant near or around us, so I approached, I believe it was Mark.
Mark Clark.
Yeah, and he said, you know, just try a petition to get the fire hydrant down there or around, you know, either at the top or maybe halfway down the street.
Where is the closest fire hydrant, is it on Central Street?
Yeah, probably, I haven't seen any.
Mr. Carnival, are you aware with the, you don't know, sorry, that's him.
I haven't seen one nami, so.
Board members, questions for Mrs. McGinnis? Mr. Prisco?
Well, I just have a comment, I mean, I think it's extremely necessary, but my biggest concern is that we...
Similar to what we did with the adult use law, we're going to try to cite it in such a way so that if it does develop that this is a loc-- there's only, I think, thirty-two locations or something, that's gonna be thirty-five.
It's a few, it's only a few.
In the state, and basically, for the one per county. So, I think that it might not be as prevalent of a business as you might think.
Well, if there's only that few, it could be.
Perhaps, but there are locations where public transportation makes accessibility far more attractive than in North Reading, who has no public transportation, for example. So, I think that we are going to, we're going to look at the same way we did with any of the other laws that we've done, we're gonna look at what serves the town the best, and we're gonna take advantage of the knowledge we can gain from other people's applications and approvals, or disapprovals, as we go through the process of writing this law.
Will you be giving a presentation at town meeting on this?
I think that probably no more than to ask for the moratorium, because, again, we haven't crafted anything yet. We're still gathering, information gathering, and that's why the moratorium is actually a popular, it's a popular move by a lot of communities, partly because of the unsureness. Even though they've issued all these, the rules and regulations that they have, there's always interpretation. And so, there's gonna be interpretation of those by other people and by us, as we read through them and decide how they affect us. And so, again, at town meeting, we're not gonna get into the nuts and bolts of a law, we're gonna get into the reason for the moratorium. I think that's the best move right now until we research it.
So, that's why I'm asking, are you doing that in the form of a follow point slide, or are you just gonna stand up?
Probably no, probably keep it simple, because it is simple. It's strictly a moratorium to gather information.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a time constraint on the moratorium?
It's eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
We are constricting it, we're deciding, we're choosing eighteen months. Some people have chosen two years, some people a year, we've chosen eighteen months. And it gives us, there's a reason for, there's a timeframe that happens. A year, there'll be a lot of people that have gone through the process, because there are some one-year moratoriums out there. We'll begin to see the results of those. That'll be very helpful to us.
I just think we do need some clarification from town council that the imposition of this moratorium does, in fact, protect us for that time period.
That's how they have advised us.
That's how they've advised us, yes.
I don't doubt that, but I think I'd like to see it in writing, so if we could get an opinion from council.
We have it.
I know the rest of the members of the board, but I'd like to--
I think they already have it. We have it, I believe.
We have it, great. If we don't have it, let's get it.
I can, I can look at how the, you know, how it's been worded, and if it's not--
Yes.
Right, if the advice they've given us isn't that explicit, then I can request that they make it explicit.
And I think the way it has worked is the insurance general's office has okay moratoriums, and then if you're an applicant looking to establish one of these businesses, my understanding is a two-step process before Department of Public Health, I believe. So, I think what would happen is Department of Public Health first look to the community, okay, what's your status? Are you accepting it, or do you have a moratorium? And when you do, they wouldn't approve the first step of the applicant. That's the way I think it's going to play out. But, I'm not town council on this, so I don't know what town council--
Yeah, I believe that what they would, I believe that what they would do is say, you know, if you want to place your application, once the, once the law they have is voted on, as long as you comply with that, then you could continue with that community.
I think this is the right approach, I think this is the way to go about it, and I would like to see it, like, considering Mr. O'Leary has a spot, someone like a Delta Detainment, put it in. The location would not be desirable for an applicant to set up operation. Mr. Priskott.
You said eighteen months?
Until October, end of October 2014, so that would allow us to bring it forward for October 2014 town meeting.
Okay. This is the right time.
Yeah. It was only changed so it's October meeting, so it's the correct time for it.
Anyone else? Board members? Okay. Oh, Mr. O'Leary, can you hear something?
Not related to this, but I know they have a meeting tomorrow night, just as an aside, if I might--
Sure.
I was gonna bring it up about all the new business, anyway. Teresa's coming before you for signage and lighting and that sort of a thing.
Yep.
I know you're all aware of it, I've gotten some phone calls, you probably have two, in relation to, it is still a neighborhood, it is a residential neighborhood that had certainly a different use there for all these years, and I assure, confident, and I tried to assure these people that you would be cognizant of the residential nature of the neighborhood and try and maintain it as much as you can.
Their meeting tonight is strictly for the sign.
Yeah, not lighting, just the signage.
Just the signage, but the signage and how much signage and lighting on the signage is this evening?
True.
It's this evening?
It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow?
Yeah.
I had actually hoped to bring them in for, you know, a site plan, and I hope they might come in, even as a voluntary, prior to beginning, I spoke to the building inspector at some length about this. Not, in his opinion, they continue an existing non-conforming use, pre-existing non-conforming use, they're continuing it. And I was more interested in getting some input from the neighborhood as far as what was gonna happen, so that they would all, so they'd be aware, comfortable, not that I would consider overturning the decision the building inspector made, he used his best judgment on it. But I just thought it would be nice if the, if the people that live around there had a chance to be educated about what was gonna happen, a chance to see what's actually happening there, be involved in the process, so it might have made it smoother.
It's sort of expressed with already the temporary signage and the lighting on it, so.
Yeah.
But I think we have to be sensitive and cognizant of whether they wanna look upon it as a continuing use of a pre-existing whatever, not so.
Not conforming.
Not so, because it wasn't a twenty-four-seven, or it wasn't a seven-day-a-week operation with Sam Ellis that they're looking for, or granted.
Well, I think there are some other issues, I think there are some other issues that are coming along there, too, so there may be, there may be a little more to it than that.
But, thank you for indulging me.
Yeah. No, it's a real concern, it's been a concern of mine since it began, Steve.
Sure, I assure the people that--
Lighting that's gonna be coming out of those towers.
I don't know if that's real, if they're really gonna do it.
Yeah.
If they're really lighting it, that was an architect's idea.
Right.
Well, I heard that. I don't know why they were presented if you didn't like the architect--
The twin towers.
So.
Right.
We'll have a chance to discuss that tomorrow night, unless one of you are gonna be there, we'll keep you apprised of what's gonna happen, what happens, yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I refuse to recommend Article 33, amend code zoning bylaws, Article 24, temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion, board members? Here we go, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Someone wish to take Article 33 here at town meeting?
I think the CPC does that.
Just do it.
CPC will do it, CPC will do it, just give a recommendation.
I don't remember, might read the motion.
Well, that's what I mean, they'll read it, okay. All right.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I missed that.
CPC is assigned to Article 33.
That's it, they're the sponsor. Okay, so we'll just give a recommendation.
I'm going to skip to Article 40, citizens petition, install water main and fire hydrant on Summit Road. I believe the citizen, Christine McGinnis, is here. If you don't mind, just identify something.
I wasn't expecting this.
It's all right.
You won't be here all night?
Just state your name and your address.
Sure, it's Christine McGinnis, Five Summit Road.
Do you explain to the board what you're looking for?
Yeah, we've been there now for about ten years, and our biggest concern is, we live on a dead-end street, and there's no fire hydrant anywhere around us, and my biggest concern is the safety, God forbid anything happens. A new home was just built across the street as well, and nothing, I thought maybe the town would probably install some kind of fire hydrant near or around us. So, I approached, I believe it was Mark.
Mark Clark.
Yeah, and he said, you know, just try a petition to get the fire hydrant down there or around, you know, either at the top or maybe halfway down the street.
Where is the closest fire hydrant, is it on Central Street?
Yeah, probably, I haven't seen any.
Mr. Kindavalli, are you aware with the, you don't know, sorry, that's him.
I haven't seen one nami, so.
Board members? Questions for Mrs. McGinnis? Mr. Priskott?
Well, I just have a comment, I mean, I think it's extremely necessary, but my biggest concern is that we have a lot of streets in town like you, that if we approve this one, I think we could be flooded with a lot of requests in the same way, so I think we have to really take that into account, because these estimates are right, or is this--
Thirty-three thousand dollars.
Thirty-three thousand dollars.
For one. For eight-hundred feet of water line.
And I would assume neighbors aren't interested in kicking in any money?
There's only me and the new neighbor across the street.
See, that's my only concern, is that's a significant amount of streets that are in town.
What is, where does the water line kick in?
Central Street.
Right at the top?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Ford?
Christine, the concern is naturally the fire hydrant, because you have nothing that close. I think the first thing we should probably find out is how close the closest one is, and then maybe a consideration would be is, and I don't know why they were talking about bringing it to three-hundred feet, because you don't need a hydrant that close to your home, you could look at, if there's nothing close on Central, even putting something closer on Central, and then the cost minimizes greatly, because you're not putting in the three-hundred feet of water main, of the eight-inch water main.
I don't know where the three-hundred feet came from.
Yeah, I think they're talking about bringing it in almost from--
From Central.
Central, all the way to the, probably just past your home.
Right up past your home.
So, if you can, if we could eliminate that and just do the hydrant, it really, it greatly reduces the cost.
Right.
Mr. Kindavalli, I'm sorry.
My understanding, it's also a concern about the proximity of wells, septic systems, so I think Mark cited that to pick up the last home on that street, so all homes would be off of wells that are--
Oh, so they're tying their services, too?
Tying the water services also, to eliminate any potential conflict with wells.
Yeah, we're on well, too. We're on well.
Yeah, I'm, my goal in doing that was only to address hydrant, the concern of having a hydrant close enough to them.
It was a two-part, I guess, issue that Mark told me about.
Okay.
That's a different story. Are there any issue with the wells, Mr. Kindavalli, that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of it, it's, Mark had the distances, it's just, it's a preference that you really would prefer not to have your well near septic.
You know what, I'm paying free water, no, well, yeah, the septic system's pretty close across the street, yeah, that's what you're referring to. Yeah, across, it's very close.
The health department guidelines, but--
The new ones?
She's not comfortable with it.
I mean, it meets the guidelines, but it's very close.
What's that, seventy-five feet?
Yeah.
Seventy-five or a hundred feet.
Seventy-five, seventy-five.
For portable.
Mr. Priskott?
The estimate says four hundred feet, but the article says three hundred feet, so there's a big difference, I mean, a hundred feet is, you know, when you're looking at it, you're conscious of something.
Is it three hundred or four hundred, Dick?
I believe it's, the estimate is four hundred feet, I think just a typo in the article.
In the article, okay.
Mark had the estimate that she's looking at four hundred feet.
I'm kind of with Mike on the issue of opening up this, based on the cost, but I would like to know how many other potential areas are in town that--
Has anybody addressed the issue, or is it just us?
The other first, this is going on floodgates if we ever do this.
Really?
That's what will happen.
I'm just concerned, it's a dead-end street, there's nothing there.
You're the first to come forward with a citizens petition in a long, long time.
Really?
You're not the first to express the concern that they live on a street with no fire hydrant or water service.
I think the last one was Plymouth Street, which I believe a water main was installed there about ten years ago, our home, Plymouth Street off of Main Street.
Right, on Main Street, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think they had a four hundred, I think it's longer than that. But that's the last, I think, petition for a water main and hydrant that I'm aware of.
Was that in conjunction with that, one of the two homes they put in down there, though? And whether or not the developer was actually charged the cost?
The developer, I believe, kicked in some money for the road, and did, I think the town took care of the water main, I think, but it's before my time, I'm not positive.
Mr. Ford?
So, I think the biggest concern is the fact that the hydrant, in my opinion, is the biggest concern, and I think that there's nothing within a thousand feet, we need to address that, and we can minimize this cost greatly from thirty-three thousand dollars to about four thousand dollars, if we're just talking about installing a hydrant.
And you write that out, so I would--
So, again, and at that point, if there's nothing within a thousand feet of each other, which is typically, Dick, eight-hundred feet is the known now, but, I mean--
Yeah, I'm not fine with that.
Does every street have to have one, or is it?
No, typically, in new construction, anyway, now what they do is, they recommend, especially, not, maybe not so much suburban, but urban area, they recommend eight-hundred feet between hydrants.
Okay.
I'm sure the fire department would love to see one, if there's nothing within a certain range, but I think if the biggest concern right now is the hydrant, I think we can, I mean, you can minimize that, that bill down to, you know, reduce it down to probably four thousand.
And that doesn't necessarily open up the floodgates, because it's--
Well, I think we can say, here in the fact that, you know, again, if there's nothing within a thousand feet, and eight-hundred feet is at least the recommended by American Water Works Association, and probably the fire department.
I think what we need to do, though, first of all, you can't do it under this article, because it's specific to Summit Road, not Central Street, and so it wouldn't fall within the four corners of the article. So, I think what we need to do is, if it's, sense of the board to take a look at it, this is not a commitment, but just to look at the other areas at town, too, where there are other similar situations and other roads, such as Summit, and there are. If we can accommodate other major getting a hydrant at least to the, close to the entrance to these streets, and if we can do it at a minimal cost, then we should lay it out, see what our exposure is, and how many spots we need.
We don't need an article for it.
No, not necessarily, but it has to be part of a capital plan on the water department to get it done.
They could, I think they could cover that.
Do you think so?
Four thousand?
It's a hydrant. I understand, I understand, but, you know, all of a sudden, we just went through the capital projects, went to other things, and we beat him to death over fuel for the cars, and now all of a sudden we're gonna spend four thousand dollars on something that wasn't even budgeted for.
Right, now, if he determines there's ten, or fifteen, or twenty of these that we need, that's a different story.
But, but again--
I mean, researching, like, back to John--
But the, you know, the citizens petition highlighted a specific issue, but it actually is more broad than your one neighborhood. But, you know, I, for one, right now, you know, can't support the article, just because of the impact that it would have on the community if we commit to doing it for your, your street, how can we not commit to doing it for others? And we don't know what that exposure is right now, but it'd be substantial. But I think Mr. Fordy's suggestion of a potential solution for the fire hydrant, not necessarily the water mains, maybe something that we should be doing systematically, anyway, taking a look at it for other, not just yourselves, but for other neighborhoods in the community that are affected the same way.
Okay, so--
I feel the same way. We had already taken a vote not to recommend your article before this evening, but now you have an explanation as to why.
Okay.
But, Mr. Fordy does have, raises a good issue, so.
Okay.
We'll see if we can address that for you.
And so, how, do I contact your department as well, again, or?
I, um, I'm just, I'm just researching where the nearest one is.
Okay, and then we'll go from there. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That doesn't mean you can't come to town meeting and make your pitch, we're just five votes.
Yeah, that's all we are.
No, really, we're just five votes, and you might find a sympathetic ear. So, that wouldn't be the first time that town meeting doesn't follow the board's recommendation. Believe me, you know, so, so the article will come up for a vote, now, whether you're there, you make a motion, it's your choice, and you get to make your pitch, you might expand it upon other areas of town that need to be looked at, too.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
If you have any questions about how to do it, feel free to give me a call offline.
Who's gonna come up on this?
Was this another one, or they have to?
Well, they read it, but I think the board, they have to provide an explanation.
Mr. Ford?
Sure.
The, um--
Oh, that's it.
So, we go ahead and work product, by the end of the year with something like that.
Thanks. All right, we're gonna go back, unless there's anyone else wants to have any other item taken out of, or any article taken out of order, we're gonna go back and start with Article One. Vali Conas?
Article number one is amending the current year budget. We're not aware of any requests at this time, it's simply a placeholder. There have been no source of funds, as said, identified at this point.
Anyone wish to take it? I'll take it. Article two, fund FY 2013 snow ice deficit.
So, we've run a deficit for this year. Liz, can you give me the updated number? Source of fund will be free cash, and the reason why the number creeps up a little bit is because of the fact that the DPW employees turn in meal tickets to the various restaurants around town, and those trickle in, so it's not as though we're incurring any additional costs.
So, it's a different number than what's in the--
It is, and this is just in the description, it might be a little bit higher.
That's why?
His loading.
Mr. Fordy? Since, we're gonna wait for the number, hey, Dick, have you met with FEMA, your FEMA representative yet on?
No, it's scheduled for like two weeks from now.
Have you determined that the number that--
Our share is probably one hundred sixty-nine thousand.
One sixty-nine? That's before the seventy-five percent?
That's after seventy.
Oh, after the seventy-five percent, okay, great.
That's great news, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, it's, that covers essentially the entire, was it, cost of the town.
Great.
One hundred and twenty-four, one thirty-one.
Restaurants tend to hold those meal tickets, and they don't submit them till the end of the season, we don't know why, but we've asked them over and over again to get them in so we can pay them.
I can take that if you want.
Mr. Masary, thank you. Article three, FY 2013, appropriate funds to capital improvement stabilization fund.
At this time, the amount is to be determined, this will be, the source of funds will be fiscal year 2013 budgets that may have a surplus in them.
Mr. Masary, wish to stay up, take that one? Article four, FY 2013, transfer funds to water stabilization fund.
The amount is two hundred sixty-eight thousand one eighty-seven, it's coming from water department retained earnings, and going into the water stabilization fund, it'll take a two-thirds vote to approve.
Take it. Article five, FY 2013, appropriate money to stabilization fund.
Funds, source of funds to be determined, however, Liz and I have talked about it, it looks as though it'll be in a definite postponement.
Probably pass over him.
Yeah, that's always--
Volunteers?
Mr. Fordy? Article six, FY 2013, appropriate funds for overlay deficit.
Yes, the amount is thirty-two thousand six nineteen, it's coming from the overlay surplus account, which is maintained by the board of assessors, and it's to create, fund a deficit in the two thousand and nine overlay account, as a result of the appeal by Verizon that was granted by the courts.
Just a question.
Mr. Masary?
Overlay surplus is usually, is this tied by year, or is it what's been released by the assessors, Greg?
Yeah, it's released. It's what they released.
It's what they released, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't catch that, who releases?
The assessors.
The assessors, thank you.
Who's doing it?
Mr. O'Leary? Article seven, FY 2013, appropriate funds for expenses related to police detailed deficits.
This is the amount that's necessary to fund the deficit, the approximate amount of the deficit is listed here as thirty-five thousand dollars. Funds will be taken from the police department operating budget and transferred for the purposes of curing this deficit. The deficit counts as a negative in the town's free cash calculation, so it's good financial management that it be cured, and the finance director has recommended that that happen.
To the current fiscal year operating budget?
Correct.
Mr. O'Leary, you could have taken that one, too?
Yeah.
Thank you. Article eight, select town offices. Okay, Mr. O'Leary, just wanna take eight while you're up there?
Sure. Eight, nine.
Article, take nine as well?
Sure.
Article nine here--
Listen, I'm pretty assured of having them go through favorably, you know? They could be shut down, man.
Hearing active reports of town offices and committees, Mr. Vali Conas, who are you, where, if any?
Well, the one might be the wastewater subcommittee, I'm not sure how we did that last time.
That would be around, what about the school building committee?
You did a recycling committee, too, by the way.
The school building committee, fourth of July committee. Pro.
Yes, we got wastewater, we got recycling.
I'll check with, Mr. Krujci. Steve's doing the article.
Although some committee votes have been turned down, you know, we're here committee reports, and the town meeting said no.
That's been very important.
Don't ask, leave it in the meeting.
That's right.
Article ten, authorized department pulp works to accept easements. Do you wish to have Mr. Kindavalli speak about this, or do you wanna speak about?
In terms of this evening?
Yes.
It's a routine article that we have, that in the course of construction, the town, sometimes it's necessary to obtain an easement, a vote of town meeting is necessary to authorize us to do that.
Are there any that you're aware of now?
I haven't signed anything in four years.
Okay.
But the one you--
It's a standard bill. To accept easements.
I know if you, you had any to accept, that's all.
Most of the stuff, it's related to CPC, and it's part of their process that it's accepted.
These are reauthorizations.
Okay. Mr. Priskott?
Yeah, sure.
Article eleven, authorized treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements.
This is a routine article, and it's necessary to avoid the town being charged of bank charges, so what we do is we maintain an amount of money that's in the bank, and as a result of that money being in the bank, the town avoids paying banking charges. Quirkin law requires it be authorized by town meeting.
Mr. Priskott?
Right.
Article twelve, authorized chapter ninety highway construction funds.
This is certainly some good news, based upon the numbers that came in from the governor, we're seeing a substantial increase in chapter ninety funding, up to seven hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. As a result, under the capital improvement plan, what we'll be doing is making a recommendation that the amount of bonding that the town does for the local road program be dropped to correspond with the increase in chapter ninety funding.
Mr. Priskott, while you're up.
Can I just, just--
Mr. O'Leary?
If we, if we have a windfall like this, why would we, and we're planning on bonding a certain amount of dollars, anyway, why would we not bond the money and just expand the number of projects we're going to get done? Because the list is certainly longer than what we can afford to do. So, I'm not necessarily in favor of reducing the--
I think you might wanna ask Mr. Kindavalli if he can--
Do that much work in one year?
The pavement management program that I've discussed earlier, we use a baseline of about eight-hundred thousand, and that's the minimum amount, we think, to keep the roads at the same rating level.
Right.
So that's a minimum level. Can we physically spend that much in one year? That would be tough to get it. So an appropriation now, which we wouldn't see till after July, anyway.
Yeah, but it's an article...
But if we're bonding, if we're bonding, you don't necessarily have to spend it in this current fiscal year. And if we're gonna bond some projects, you can carry it to, into next year.
Greg and I discussed it, and I think we agreed to go with the 800. I think that makes sense for the town.
The only reason why we would stick with the 800 is that was the number that was presented to the capital improvement planning committee. We're trying to shake this system.
But you're looking to reduce the bonded amount by how much?
The bonded amount would go from 300,000 to 63,000.
But the cost of borrowing right now is still pretty cheap.
Well, if you look at other items in the capo...
I don't disagree with that. One of the suggestions would be, do you wanna look at other items in the capo?
I think you have to look at the entire situation, and my recommendation is to put the money away. I mean, everything is stretched to the limit in terms of...
But see, to me, you know, we had planned on bonding 300 and how much?
300.
300,000. $300,000. And that was factored into our budget proposal and all of our forecasting and all the rest. I'm sorry, Dick?
But that's, we're not rolling it again, like 450,000 for Mass Highway. That's how I come up with that number.
He understands.
No, I understand that. I understand that. And all of a sudden, we have an additional windfall earmarked towards town road programs and travel the roads like I do. There's a lot of roads that need attention, and if we can attack them sooner rather than later, and Dick, you know that to be true, you're actually minimizing the cost by maintaining them sooner rather than later. So to me, the funds are earmarked specifically for that. We factored in the $300,000 for road improvements, bonding for road improvements. I say tackle a few more streets and get them done. Otherwise, we were just chasing our tail anyway, and it's another $250,000 in road work we're gonna have to do later on. The funds were earmarked for it, both from the bonding standpoint and now the chapter 90 funds. So to your point, Joe, as far as, you know, looking at another project or something like that, no. I'm content with what we've come up with. But when we have a windfall in a specific area such as chapter 90, capitalize on it and don't retreat from your game plan, is what we're planning on doing anyway. So, because again, this is another one of those areas in town that we've forever put off, you know, trying to navigate the...
But Steve, this cost of borrowing in terms of interest, it's not just the interest, it's the debt that you have to pay, the debt service. So here we are, we're struggling with getting our capital plan into this rotation, which was presented by Don Kelleher, the Finance Committee, to the board. And, you know, I think after looking at that, I think that's the way we really wanna go to sustain a capital program. And I think by borrowing less, we have a better opportunity of getting that thing off the ground.
Well, then...
And we still meet the goal of 800,000 on road maintenance, which is something that was put together after a consultant did a study that said, if we go along this way, we will get to a point where we've got a road rating that meets the requirement, and we slowly approach more of a maintenance versus a major...
Well, then put it into the capital improvement stabilization fund, which can be used for road improvements also. So put the $237,000 into the capital improvement stabilization fund.
There isn't cash, though. There's no cash.
You're right, you're right, you're right. You're just not gonna borrow.
Yeah.
Just not gonna borrow the money.
So it basically happens, is you take less out of the capital stabilization fund.
What's that?
You take less out going forward in the future.
That, yeah, that's what I was, that was the point I was gonna make.
That's okay.
Good. All right, never mind.
Mr. Foddy? The town minute sure doesn't... Mind, I'd like to hear from Dick if it's okay, on Dick's opinion on road, you know? I know we have a plan, doesn't mean you can't deviate from the plan and do more as he's recommending.
Oh, I'd love more money, but the plan I presented was only for town-accepted roads. There are a number of non-accepted roads we maintain, and the 40 bonded money cannot be used for that purpose. So to maintain those roads, it doesn't really do me any good, doesn't, because I can't use it for non-accepted roads. Historically, the, I think the source has been free cash for the town road money, and so we could use it on the Plymouth Road or things like that. So unfortunately, yes, I would like to have it, but I can't use it for what we probably needed for. 800 will get us, Greg and I discussed it, 800 will get us, keep it a steady, in a steady state. If you gave me $50 million, I'd be glad to take it, Joe.
Right, no, I understand.
But, you know, there's a bigger picture here, as Greg and Bob probably alluded to.
And I think another thing we need to look at, hopefully this is a trend for chapter 90 going forward, which means we're gonna, right, which means we're gonna have to borrow less going forward, which we anticipated borrowing around that $300,000 every year.
Yeah, I think this is a 10-year deal?
It looks like it.
Looks like it.
So, yeah, it looks like it's 10-year deal, so for the next 10 years, we're gonna, we're not looking at 300, we're looking at closer to 50 or 60.
My recommendation is go with what Greg recommended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. But I think the consensus is to bond less. Article 13, prior bills.
The source of funds is free cash. Typically, we have some small...
Excuse me, who's doing the chapter 90? Oh, Prisco.
Michael?
Prisco.
Okay, sorry.
Article 13, the amount needs to be determined, however it is small. It would be for unpaid medical bills related to either public safety employees or disabled public safety employees. Typically, because of medical providers, the bills lag through the end of the fiscal year. However, the source of funds would be free cash. And we'll have an item I was supposed to be for town meeting.
I'll take it. Article 14, FY 2014, operating budget.
The budget as voted by the board, including enterprise funds, totals $60,311,620, and you'll see that cost shown on the next page up at the very top of the Board of Selectmen.
$60,311,620.
The difference between your number and the Finance Committee's number is the Finance Committee has yet to take a position on the ALS paramedic service. That's the only difference between the two. The budget going to town meeting, as we've done in the past, will be broken up into two motions. The first motion will be everything which is subject to a majority vote, and that's the entire budget, except for debt service and for the solid waste budget. Both of those, last two budgets require a two-thirds vote because they're being funded partially through use of stabilization fund monies. A debt service is funded through the debt capital stabilization fund that we've talked about a little bit tonight, and the solid waste budget receives partial funding through the solid waste stabilization fund. So what we do is we break those up, we vote on them separately. The reason why we do that is if we don't do that, then the whole budget will be subject to a two-thirds vote. We will also prepare a line item motion. We haven't had one in the eight years that I've been here, but we always prepare for the worst. And by preparing for the worst, we will have a separate line item motion on each and every line that's in the budget.
Mr. Vali, you're on it, so I'll read the motion, and you'll be prepared to present the budget.
Yeah, I will.
Article 15, transfers from free cash to supplement the FY 2014 operating budget.
Board members, we've broken out two items out of the budget, which are costs that are going to Sunset at the end of fiscal year 2014. That's the one-time 15% longevity benefit and the final payment under the COPS FAST grant program. Those two amounts total 214,743, and it's recommended they be funded through free cash.
I'll take that. Article 16, the FY 2014 capital expenditures.
Yes, the capital improvement plan that the board adopted is shown here. I do wanna point out that it's within the body of the article, so there is some limited flexibility in terms of adding new programs at this point. However, you can decide to reduce any amount that you see here, and based upon the chapter 90 money that you've already discussed, we've prepared a motion for the board to consider reducing the town road program from 300,000 to 63,000. The source of funds would remain the same, which is bonding.
Mr. Foddy, you wish to take it? Article 17, fund retirement obligations. Should I make that motion now?
Yes, I would suggest that the board consider it at this time. You've already talked about it this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the vote of April 29, 2013, recommending the fiscal 2014 capital improvement plan as follows. Town road program change amount requested from 300,000 to 63,000.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Article 17, fund retirement obligations.
This is for the town and the schools' end-of-career buybacks. We've estimated that our annual career buybacks is $250,000. It's consistent with what we've appropriated in prior years, and the source of funds is reasonably appropriate.
These are simply vacation buybacks?
They are.
Mr. Foddy? Article 18, transfer of funds to solid waste stabilization.
The articles in here is a placeholder holder, Mr. Chairman. What we would like to do is, because there is fee money associated in the solid waste budget, we would like to do is we'd like to say that any balance that remains in the solid waste budget at the end of the fiscal year, we transfer it to the stabilization fund account so that it doesn't get co-mingled with general fund monies. The amount is to be determined.
Mr. Foddy, you wish to take that? Article 19, transfer of funds to other post-deployment benefits liability trust fund.
We will recommend that the article be passed over because we do not have a source of funds. It will be back for October town meeting.
Mr. Foddy, while you're up. Article 20, fund Martins Pond flood mitigation.
Board members, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to defer this to Mr. Carnavale.
This article refers to the funds that were previously appropriated for the Route 62 culvert work. As most of you know, due to FEMA regulations, we had to abandon that project. So the idea is to take that money and reuse it for something that'll benefit the Martins Pond community. Specifically, it would develop a Martinsburg floodway operations and maintenance plan that would have some proactive steps and reactive steps. The proactive steps would be mostly on the capital side, but the total project is routine culvert inspections, vegetation removal. Capital things would be extending it like a trash rack at the Route 62 culvert, better than we have now, and at Benevento Culvert. Apparently, those two culverts have been known to leak due flooding upstream, so something better than that's there now. Coordination with Wilmington, there's actually some, their water supply has some gates or stoplogs to remove those prior to a storm that would have some benefit. And potentially install some kind of gauges. Right now, the Volunteers of Martins Pond had a great group of people that would voluntarily go out and measure things, and they've all either retired or moved on. So something, it would be either our staff or some kind of telemetry device, a device will measure the water level, that'll trigger a, something's wrong here, the water's higher than it should be. And as for the reactive steps, would be more or less, if something happens, if we get that, either by visual or by that electronic signal, we will go and do something. The, also, one other thing there is, there are some grant programs out there. One is, has a mitigation grant program. One is to take properties that historically flood, and the town buys them to eliminate the repetitive flood damage, number one. Or possibly take homes and elevate them to make them less flood damage prone. So we'll do some surveying as part of that to determine the base elevation in some of these homes. The recent change in the flood insurance rates predicated by Hurricane Katrina make a lot more homes in North Reading in the flood zone, and having that information will be good for them to, if they wanna petition FEMA to say, please, my elevation is such that I don't need to be in the flood zone. And the difference order magnitude is what used to be $400 insurance is now $4,000 for average homeowner. So the work itself is, first step is this plan, and the capital plan, the funds would be on capital plan, it's not for maintenance type issues. The maintenance issues, we take care of in the operating budget, but the intent of the funds is for capital one-time construction of things that would help the area.
What is the amount of the unexpendished funds? Is anyone aware of that article?
It's slightly under $200,000.
Around 200, you said?
Slightly under, I believe. The original appropriation was 270 to match the FEMA amount, and I think through all the design and permitting, we used roughly $75,000. So this is roughly the same amount of money that was appropriated, the same dollar amount.
So you'll be prepared to give a presentation, something similar to what you told us tonight at town meeting on this, or?
I can.
Okay.
I reckon I can work with Janet Nacogia.
Okay. I don't know who had first, Bob, Steve, Michael?
I was just gonna ask, that he put together in writing?
I'll put a PowerPoint thing together.
What you just told us.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Janet Nacogia has a lot of it already put together in conjunction with the DPW and Mark...
Janet's probably watching right now, she probably has it done.
But I'd be happy to take it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Prisco?
So the 190-ish, that's what happens, that money now?
The original appropriation was for the design...
Project is now being put into this article for expenditure for Martins Pond.
Okay, so we're not gonna borrow money, we're just gonna use this existing money?
Right, it's a...
The state will let us do it?
It's bonded money, so we need a town meeting vote to authorize to transfer the use from project A to project B.
But wasn't it matching, where's the matching funds?
That's gone.
That was above there. That was $520,000 above it. That's the money we had to say we had to return. But that was the, about the commitment FEMA was gonna give us if we could do the project. We had to return that.
DEP said we couldn't do it. Was it DEP said we couldn't do it?
It's basically DEP and the federal. If you open up a culvert such you impact people downstream, you have to either get their permission, number one, or hold it upstream. There's nowhere you place to hold it upstream, unfortunately. And there are roughly 71 impacted parcels downstream, so the likelihood of getting 71 people in Wilmington to agree to something to help North Reading, we thought was not realistic.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Article 21, fund repairs to...
Gotta do it, me.
Mr. O'Leary's taking it. Article 21, fund repairs to town buildings.
Pass over, will be addressed at October town meeting.
Mr. O'Leary? Another one you shouldn't have a problem with?
It's another one.
Article 22, amend code, general bylaws, chapter 104, local fingerprint submission requirements for license application, applicants.
The article amends the bylaw that was created at the October 2012 town meeting by adding in a number of other licenses that applicants would be required to undergo civil fingerprinting run through the police department to ensure public safety in the community.
I'll take it. Do you know whether or not the police chief intends to give any sort of presentation on this, or?
I will touch base with him. I'm sure he can speak in terms of where the law came from and how it originated.
He said I'll take it.
But I thought he, when he was here last, he told us that this is our change, not his, so I don't think he would...
Yeah, this is just adding...
Right, we're just adding, this is what we wanna do, not him. Really has nothing to do with him.
But I thought maybe...
The whole program.
The whole program.
Thought maybe...
Oh, you wanna do it again, what we did in October?
He can explain, I think, the purpose of this, what this will allow him to do, well, speak about what we did last October that now allows him to do fingerprints nationwide versus just locally, to do a search for background on these particular vendors, as well as the vendors that we had inserted in last October. But if not, I can do the whole thing if I have a problem.
Let's go back to article 20. Are we gonna make a recommendation tonight?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sure. Good catch.
Move to recommend article 20?
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Gene Anamis. Article 23, appropriate funds for expenses related to paramedic education costs.
Correct. The purpose of this article is to take monies from this year's budget that were...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll take a timeout. Mr. Jones?
That covers you.
That covers you.
If it's approved in time, then they would- No, I believe it has to go through the AG's office?
I don't know.
It does.
It does.
So, this will not apply to the current-
If it's not, in May, we're not going to know until probably July 2nd.
That's right.
Sorry I missed you. I had my head down.
We raised that issue when the Fourth of July committee was in here, Brad. Just, we could maybe ask the AG to-
Expedite their approval.
Or no, or-
Or not.
Or not expedited.
I think, well-
I suspect it isn't gonna get approved.
In addition to the approval of the Attorney General's office, there are posting requirements following the approval, too.
Okay, so, I think, Mr. Stat just put the nail in that coffin. I don't think it's gonna-
The last one, but in October, we can submit them by email now. And they got approved in two days.
Oh.
Really? So, then, as long as, this might raise a few more eyebrows because it's quite extensive now, so I don't know what the Attorney General will consider. But it's possible.
Possible. Dealing with possibilities.
To be determined, Mr. Chairman.
That's very true. Now, to Article 23, appropriate funds for expenses related to paramedic education costs. Finance Director is still-
Thank you. I will explain Article 23 on the reasoning behind appropriating the funds for expenses related to paramedic education costs. The program started late this fiscal year, FY13, so we have remaining funds in the fire department's operating budget for FY13 that need to be brought forward into FY14. So, what we are proposing is to transfer from their operating budget to the ambulance receipts reserved, and then come back out to fund these. And what the $28,300 represents is $20,000 for ALS stipends and $8,300 for shift coverage. And like I said, it's due to the program starting late, so we haven't paid out all the stipends and shift coverage as of yet. And schooling goes until October.
Any questions? All right, I'll read the motion. You gonna be prepared to give that explanation at town meeting?
Sure, or the fire chief, whoever, you know. He's aware of it, too, but I don't mind doing it.
Article 24 through 32, reauthorization of various revolving accounts. We can do these as one motion, Mr. Value Code?
That's exactly how we intend to do it.
Who's the volunteer?
Mr. Masari has jumped up and volunteered to take that.
And if it has to go the other way, we'll go the other way, too.
Mr. Prisco, do you have a question?
No, sir.
33, we already tackled.
Who is gonna do it, the CPCs?
CPCs. 34, accept mass general law, Chapter 41, Section 110A, office hours on Saturdays. This is Stats.
Thank you, gentlemen. This really deals with voter registration sessions on weekends. Normally, we don't encounter this problem because all elections are on a Tuesday, or they had been in the past, making a voter registration deadline historically on a Wednesday, 20 days prior to the event. Last year, for the first time since the implementation of our town charter in '71, we had an election on a Saturday, a special election, which required a 20-day prior voter registration deadline of a Sunday. Now, Mass. General Law covers that and has a provision that says any deadlines following on Sunday can be held on the day before. So, our voter registration deadline became Saturday, which was 19 days or 20 days, I guess, before that technically. Saturday, then, okay, that being said, I thought to myself back then, last year, well, this is a one-time occurrence. Chances are, we'll never have another weekend election. And then, it occurred again this year. So, that being said, the voter registration for our Friday election this year, our special election in March on Friday, had a deadline of Saturday, again. It is not so much the idea of people working on a Saturday. That is the issue here. It is the issue of the building being an empty place on a Saturday all day. The amount of traffic that goes by this building doesn't exist as it does on a regular day, a Friday even. So, it's a kind of a off-the-beaten-path location. You have a couple of people here, at the most, sometimes just one, holding a voter registration session with a sign outside that says, "Come on in, we're open." The doors have to be open. And you can't be sure what's going to come in during that time period. I've been here myself at times like that, and it's not a comfortable position, especially for a woman or two who's covering the office in that situation. It's not the cost that I'm trying to address here, but just the idea that it's not in the mainstream on the weekend. Most of our voter registrations nowadays come through the RMV. I'd say a good 90% do. The amount of people that actually physically walk in to register to vote is quite minimal. Second to the RMV, we get most of the other registrations through the mail. The Secretary of State has permitted a mail-in registration form now that we have available on our website, as well as on the Secretary of State's website. So, those are the avenues that most people do take. Some of the people that came in for the two Saturday registration sessions didn't even vote at the two events. They were more concerned, back in 2012, they were more concerned about the presidential election that year. And they just saw the sign out that said, "We were open," said, "Oh, this is great, I'll come in and register now." Well, there was at least three more voter registration late-night deadlines between March and the presidential that could have accommodated them as well on a regular night when there is some activity in the building, you know, and people around. So, I am looking to change this. The provision of law that I have presented here allows us to hold that deadline on a Friday if the voter registration was on a Saturday. So, number one, there is a law in place that if the deadline fell on a Sunday, as it did last year, the law already says that we will be closed on Sunday, and that voter registration goes backwards one day to Saturday. So, I'm looking now, again, to address it to be on a Friday. Most people are not aware of the voter registration deadline for an event. They don't count the calendar for 20 days prior. They are notified through our office, basically publicizing it, either on the web or an article in the newspaper and through cable television. And that's what makes them aware of the deadline, you know, and the sign out front. It's not as though they're waiting for that day to come, you know, so they can come in and register because, of course, anyone can register at any time up to a deadline. The deadline is just the last given time. So, that's what I'm looking for in this article that I hope you will consider.
Well, we've already recommended it.
Okay.
Three to two.
Yes, I know. I'm hoping to persuade the two dissenting votes.
Any questions?
Oh, you're not gonna sway my dis-
I didn't think I would, Mr. O'Leary.
Again, I'm not looking to disenfranchise anybody, and I know it's inconvenient, and I understand the concerns.
No, it's not an inconvenience, truly.
I understand.
And I don't believe anybody would be disenfranchised because of the opportunity to register in so many different avenues. Even state assistance agencies offer-
Well, just the example that you gave, that someone happened to drive by and two or three people that saw the sign out.
But the sign could be out Friday.
I understand that, but they might not be driving by on a Saturday. Maybe they're taking their kid to a soccer practice somewhere else or a game over in Wilmington, and they see it, and they swing it, and they do it. You know, they register.
Generally speaking, if somebody was looking to register for the event, they will be aware of that deadline. And citing a sign in the front of the building is not necessarily targeting the person that was looking to register for that event that the registration session is held for. That is a by-chance drive-by, for instance. You know, and that's, you know, of course, welcome. But as I said, the voter registration form is a mail-in form also, available right on our website, as well as in different avenues.
I think it makes sense. I don't think you'll disenfranchise anybody if they're doing it on a Friday versus a Saturday. And you say there's more traffic on a Friday than there would be on a Saturday. So, you're more likely to get more people on a Friday than see the sign and come in and register.
Correct.
And again, some people work late.
The hours are, no, the hours, I believe it's 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
On a Saturday, it would be, you know, it's the same on a Friday, except that we're open at 8:00. So, it's actually, it's actually more time on a Friday.
Well, more time if you-
Yeah. If you're not working on a Saturday, you have all day.
So, anyway.
Well, nice attempt. We're not gonna change the three to two, but it's still, we still recommend it. It'll probably still pass.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
I hope it does for you.
Steve?
Steve? Joe? Mr. Prisco? Article 35, accept mass general law, Chapter 138, Section 33B, sale of alcoholic beverages by on-premises licensees on Sundays. This is just to roll back. They're already able to do so. This is to roll it back from noon to 10:00 AM. Mr. Prisco?
Yep, you got it.
Article 36, accept mass general law, Chapter 32B, Section 20, other post-employment benefits liability trust fund. Mr. Value Code?
This is creating the account and then transferring the balance that's in our OPEB stabilization fund to be in this account. This was recommended by our auditor when he came in and made his presentation to the board. It allows for a more aggressive investment strategy than typically municipal funds are allowed.
Mr. Prisco? Article 37, appropriation of bond premiums to reduce high/middle school project borrowing cost.
I think you should take it.
The article provides that the town will appropriate the bond premium, the amount of $4.8 million, to reduce the amount of the borrowing for the high school project. It's most important and most critical to note that the project cost is not increasing by this amount of money. However, the source of funds is the bond premium, and I believe that was the original intention of this board. And the DOR, Department of Revenue, did issue a legal opinion several months ago. I'm supporting this mechanism and indicated to us that it needs to take place prior to the close of the fiscal year.
And I think Finance Director has some language. I don't know if you already have it, the DOR. Article 38, rescind vote under Article 21, June 7, 2010, town meeting.
The original bond authorization for the project voted in March of 2012 was for $107,728,000. That included the $1 million for the feasibility study, so this article eliminates that duplicity and provides that we don't have an additional $1 million authorization that's out there.
Article 39, rescind mass general law, Chapter 41, Section 100B. I'm going to propose that we pass over this. We haven't taken a recommendation. We're getting information in, at least we have, since the end of last week. Hopefully, there's more information that came in today. I don't think I'll be ready to render an opinion one way or the other on this column in two weeks from now, I believe, this town meeting.
Yes.
I don't know how everyone else feels. Mr. Prisco?
I've been saying it since we started discussing this one article. I think it needs more time for us to be able to collect our information and also have some exchange with the local unions as well.
Yeah, the, what we did was, we did calculate what the potential exposure would be. But, you know, if the board's gonna pass over it, I'm not sure really it's relevant to the discussion this evening.
Well, it's still key to have the information.
I'm curious.
I still want to get more information, but I just don't think we'll have enough. And I think Mr. Prisco raised a good point that we probably should have some dialogue.
Absolutely.
Do you have some information for us, Steve?
We just did a calculation based upon, again, the exposure is nursing home care. I think that the other expenses are less significant. The cost that we came up with, the average nursing home stay, is 835 days. Massachusetts rate is $327 a day. So, if you look at what a maximum exposure is just based upon nursing services, about $273,000 per person.
Per person?
Per person, about 40% of individuals will require some level of nursing home care at some point in their life.
But what percentage of our current workforce, or our current retirees, because if this is rescinded, our current workforce is out?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
So, what I think we were looking to try and quantify was, do we have any idea, so how many retirees do we have out there that may be eligible for this benefit?
Yeah, we're looking into that at this time.
I think Allison was trying to-
She was.
I still think it's a good project for, so that we can really-
Oh, we still need the information.
We still need the information, so.
So, this would only impact those retirees that, over the employment here in town, there was some reported something.
Right. You know, there was someone couldn't have a knee injury, and that resulted in the town-
No, we have people currently out on disability retirement.
Correct.
Public safety people, out on disability retirement.
Those are people that potentially-
Those are the people who are eligible-
Correct.
Under this chapter.
It's only those that go out on disability retirement.
Correct. Correct.
Right, so we have a certain number of those employees out there right now. I guess I don't know what the number is, but- Who may be eligible for this benefit as a result of their disability. It would have to be proven that the costs associated with what would be charged back to the town are a direct result of their disability or the line of duty.
So, the only other thing I wanted to add while we're discussing the item is there was a comment made by the board in terms of whether Medicare would cover nursing home services, and they do for rehabilitation. Rehabilitation is up to 100 days of convalescence immediately following discharge from a hospital. So, there has to be a link between a hospital stay and causality in terms of them checking into a nursing facility. It's limited up to 100 days. So, there is some pickup for people who are eligible for Medicare, but it's not universal.
It's only for rehab.
It's only for rehab, and it has to be related to what they call episode of care, which is the circumstances that give rise to the person being in the hospital.
There has to be another way.
There is still another thing that kicks in. There is still another thing that kicks in, I'm pretty sure.
I don't know.
The hundred days has got to do with that transition rehab. Then after that, I think the state still picks up those that can't pay.
Medicaid would pick up for those individuals who are income-eligible, but I've got to...
There wouldn't be any of these people.
No, it says that Medicare provides coverage for rehabilitation, however, it does not provide coverage for long-term care.
I think what we need to look at is whether or not there's some sort of long-term disability policy that would cover this. I mean, I saw that you sent us, there's one community, it was, cost them $700,000 annually for one particular person, if I read it correctly.
Yes.
So the exposure there is, financially, is tremendous. So I think we have to try to limit that, but also, I think we probably should be looking at, how do we provide some sort of benefit that covers public safety that go out? What? No?
No, no. But the issue is, the issue isn't with the current employees, it's retirees. How do you get a liability insurance policy for them?
No, you can't.
You can't.
And as far as...
That's the challenge.
You know, the current employees, right now, none of them are benefiting the benefit here, fortunately, but they would be eligible to join the ranks.
No, I know. You know. We've got to try to limit that exposure somewhere.
We've been pretty fortunate, you know, but we really only had one individual for the last few years that found themselves in a fortunate set of circumstances that required us to step up and pay.
I think Mr. Donain is right. I think we do have to explore the whole benefit of liability insurance for our current staff now. Because, you know, if you look at, you've got some guys that are out right now, and we're paying them a hundred percent, when there's no way for us to recover that money, and we're still covering them on overtime, which is, you know, so we're getting hit twice. You know, I think the discussion and the research on short-term liability and maybe even a long-term liability is something that worthy of discussion and some research. I know we did a little bit of that about five years ago, and I still have some of that data, it's a low, but we had quite a bit of research done on it, and I think it's a worthy discussion to bring up, even as we start into our contract talks. The retiree one, that's a tough one, for the ones that are already retired.
When will we get that data? I'm sorry?
When are we going to get that data later, and how many, data on how many retirees?
We should have it before town meeting.
Thanks.
I was going to do it.
I want to do it.
Well, what are we going to do?
I've already got the request in, it's just a matter of coming back.
Well, we have to vote, right?
Well...
We can wait to make a recommendation.
I think we should wait until we have some more information. So we're going to, we'll have a meeting before town meeting. And we'll take a vote then?
I did, that's all, I mean, take the vote now. We're going to pass it over. I think, it's not a motion, but I think we should have a motion to pass it over.
It wasn't clear that we were going to pass it over. If it's clear we're going to pass it over, I agree with you.
No, I don't know what the consensus is. My feeling is that we should pass it over. I don't think we're going to have...
Because we can't say...
All the information we need, it's sufficient time to fully digest it and understand it in order to make a recommendation, up or down on this, either prior to or at town meeting. But that's just me.
I'm just looking at minutes, so maybe we have to go back and amend our minutes, because it said we voted unanimously to recommend this. I don't think we did.
No, yeah, we didn't do that.
No, we didn't. We didn't do that. It was a good catch, but...
A little late.
I thought it was, I thought you were talking about Article thirty-four, chapter forty-one. For Article thirty-four, we unanimously recommended, but not Article thirty-nine, chapter forty-one. Maybe, yeah, that's how I read it, but maybe I misread it.
No, we unanimously did chapter thirty-four.
All right, that was three to two.
Two to two. So, yeah, it's Article twenty-second, board minutes, page six of those minutes. I don't have the page. But, this is Article thirty-eight, rescind vote under Article twenty-one, June seventh, two thousand and ten, which was this one here. No, excuse me, that's not it, I apologize, hold on.
I think the numbers, they got renumbered at some point.
I think the numbers changed. It was Article thirty-seven, so it changed. So it was Article thirty-seven. And it has, let's see, voted unanimous.
Yeah, I don't think we even took a vote on this one.
We didn't.
The numbering has got, they got renumbered.
No, it's Article thirty-eight. Rescind vote under Article twenty-one. Right. It's Article thirty-eight, in the minutes. But it says... I'm sorry.
No, it's, I don't, hang on.
Thirty-nine.
It was in a different spot. And I don't think it was voted. It was originally somewhere further up in the warrant, and it got moved to the back of the warrant. So I don't think that there was a vote taken on the article.
Right, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Something else.
Mr. Prisco?
I'd like to make a motion to pass over Article thirty-nine.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of passing over Article thirty-nine?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous?
Originally, it was Article twenty-eight.
Who's going to make the motion?
I'll read it.
Either Bob or I.
Oh, yeah, it's like Bob's up, huh? Mr. Misery? Yeah, there you go, Bob.
All right, I will do that.
And that concludes our informational hearing on June town meeting. I think it concludes item eleven, vote warrant article recommendations, and assignments.
We accomplished two tasks. You've done it.
Multi-task. All right, I think now we'll hold a new business. Mr. Prisco?
Yeah, I only have one thing. There was an article in the transcript regarding Hillview, the pub being open, and I got some phone calls, especially from the seniors, many of the seniors in town, saying that they felt a little discriminated because the way the article read was, it was open for leagues, people that played the golf leagues, and that's really not true. It's open five-thirty to nine-thirty, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and it's open to the public. It's open for everybody, but it is a pub menu. At this time, I know Pat Lee has, I spoke with him as well, he welcomes everybody in town, but know that it's a limited menu when you do go in, it's not like it used to be. And, you know, understand, I know a lot of people are upset about the situation at the pub, but it's a business decision. And at this time, Mr. Lee's having some struggles in trying to get that pub up and running where he can financially afford to do, to open it up more hours and to offer more of the services. He's just not there yet. So I think we just have to be a little patient, but I also want the public to know that, you know, if you're interested Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays, feel free to swing by. That's all I have.
Mr. Prisco? Mr. Misery?
My wife mentioned the same thing, and I said to her, if it's open, it's open to the public on those days. And I was just driving in, and I happened to catch the news of this gigantic tornado that tore through a small community in Oklahoma. And I'm just looking at the news break, that up to now, they think there's at least fifty-one people killed. Just thought I'd mention that, how lucky we are living here in the east, where we don't have these kinds of horrendous tornadoes at this time of the year. Other than that, I'm happy to see the school project moving along. It's interesting now that you can start to see the structure even from down on sixty-two that you couldn't see a while ago. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Misery. Mr. Ford?
I just, I read a story in the Patch, and I wanted to congratulate a local student, Kiana Lamont. She was named as a girl member of the Board of Directors of Girl Scouts of Eastern Mass. It's a pretty prominent position for wanting to stand, she'll play a critical role in determining the future of Girl Scouts in Eastern Massachusetts. She's a junior, an early student at North Reading High School, I just wanted to give a shout out to her. Her father happens to be a police officer also, Kiana Lamont. And I just want to ask me to give his mother our best wishes for speedy recovery of her accident last week. I hope she does well.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary?
Well, that was a nice segue. First of all, I'd like to, you know, acknowledge the fire department and their response to my mother's time of need. Again, they came at extremely timely basis, extremely professional, compassionate, did a terrific job in handling my mother's needs last Wednesday morning. And I just want to acknowledge that publicly and thank them very much. In relation to my mother, she is in rehab and feisty as ever, ready to go, and she'll be back to her old fighting ways shortly, we hope so. Thank you very much. The other thing, again, Mary Prenney mentioned Marty Dickman retired as a van driver for the seniors. He served us well, and we wish him well and good health in his retirement. And I did bring up the issue down at the former Thompson Club, soon to be Teresa's letting, and I was happy we had the opportunity to address it with the majority of the planning commission being present, in that, again, it is a residential neighborhood that shouldn't be forgotten, and I would hope that the owner of the property will remain cognizant of that, sensitive to the impact that's going to occur in that neighborhood. I wish him much success, but he has to be somewhat sympathetic towards the neighbors also, considerate. And the only other thing was, we're going to have a continuation of a public hearing on town on land up in the Oakdale Road Extension area, but that's been put off, I understand?
I did. I asked it to be put off. I thought tonight's meeting was going to go longer than it had, because I think that's going to take some time, given the nature of the last hearing that we had. But it will be at the next hearing, not the next meeting after town meeting, because Mr. Valiakos, we won't have another meeting in this forum until after town meeting, correct?
That's right.
Which is fine, too, other than, you know, unless the board discerns at this particular point in time that we don't want to take any action on it anyway, but...
I just haven't, I don't know if we received any, I think we were looking for additional input from town departments.
We were. We're still gathering up that information.
Okay. So at some point, whenever it's rescheduled, I think we need to notify the abiders at least as to when that's going to be continued, too. So I don't know how we want to handle that, but at least those members who were present that evening, I don't know if we had their addresses.
Yeah, we did. We actually did a good job of notifying them tonight, none of whom were here.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. I, too, want to wish Mrs. O'Leary a speedy recovery. Hopefully, she's back in town soon, monitoring her scanner. Hopefully, the fire department can get her address correct, right?
I don't think I see why the mics are on or off.
Yeah, I know. Other than that, the members of the Fourth of July community that were here, as they were leaving, they do have one other fundraising effort that they're undertaking. They're selling Fourth of July red, white, and blue wristbands that they're going to be selling throughout the town and at the schools, so hopefully you will contribute to what has been, and hopefully will continue to be a great event. I'm very happy that, once again, they've taken under the task of bringing back the Fourth of July fireworks to North Reading. Other than that, that's all I have, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, people, you should mention the fact that the school building committee signed the OPEB.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Misery. The secondary school building committee at its last meeting voted in public session to accept the guarantee maximum price bid that was submitted to us by Gilbane, the CM at risk on March eleventh, and that will be or has been executed, Mr. Valiakos? You know, it comes to your desk?
In the hands of Town Council, for review.
So we are now locked and loaded with Gilbane. That's what that means, Mr. Jones. All right? Thank you, Mr. Misery. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good work. Nine thirty, nine thirty-two.